Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started on the meeting tonight. It's now 5:30. If you would please, let's stand for a moment for prayer. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, you have blessed us with another beautiful day, dear Lord. You have blessed us with the ability, Lord, to try to do what we can do for the best of Pickens County. God will go with us as we go through this evening, be with the meeting going on downstairs. They try to come up with plans for the Downtown Development Authority. And, Lord, as we go through the rest of our lives, God directs us in the path that we have to go and be with us as we go from day to day. In your heaven-sweet name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Now, if you would please, do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right. Amendments to the agenda. Item number three. Deborah, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do. Several of them. Would you like to read them?
No, I can take it. Amendments to the agenda. What we need to do here under item A is, under consent agenda, we signed a family connection resolution. B, under action items, unsupervised youth policy for Roper Park. Item C, under financial report, the audit report has come in. D, under new business, AmeriCorps position, Pickens County Extension Office. Item E, under new business, a deed, road dedication, Vineyard Way off Highway 136. Any other, any questions to those amendments to the agenda? None being, I need a move in a second to approve the amendments to the agenda.
A second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, all that in favor, let know by saying aye.
Aye.
None further, thank you. All right. Then we'll come back, bring this down to item five, employee recognition. We have no employee recognitions of this month. So, Ms. Becky, you're off the hook.
Yeah.
All right. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fay, and we have got the auditing company here to go with the audit, but I guess Fay, you're going to handle a short synopsis of the financial report and then turn it over to the audit report.
Yes. You all have your financial report for the month. The expenditure budget should be at 41.7% or less. The general fund revenue collected through May 31st was $5,24,834, and that's 21.9% of the budgeted amount. The expenditures through May 31st, 2016, are $9,151,865, and that's 38.41%. So, overall, the expenditures are 3.29% under budget. And the line and budget reports were distributed to the department head and elected officials on June 10th. And I have copies of those detailed reports.
Is there any of the departments that are over budget for any reason whatsoever? I see one or two.
There are a couple that are over budget. I know the EMA, but they've had, they're just caused by the code red. That's the majority of their budget, and it's paid in January. But they've also had some improvements to their facility that was not budgeted. The general government buildings is over slightly, but that's due to the improvements. Mostly at the Adcanx building across the way that's going to be rented out to the fax. And that's really all that I see.
When that gets, when it happens, it looks like it might happen here pretty quick. We have got, I think Mr. Mannan was working on the lead, it should be finished up pretty quick. That should take, make a correction when we start receiving revenues from that.
It will. We'll budget the revenue for the remainder of the year, and we can offset some of those expenditures.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other questions on the financial report? Fay, you're going to be here. Quick question, Phil was asking. You're going to be here tomorrow, correct?
I am. So, for the rest of the time for finance and finance portion, I'd like to introduce Beth Rhimes. She's our audit partner with Betty's Carter, and she is going to present the audit summary for the period ending December 31st, 2015.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here with you this afternoon to talk about the audit of the financial statements for Pickens County. This is the third year our firm, Betty's Carter Company, has performed your audit, and we feel like we're getting better and better every year, don't we, Fay? We're getting a little bit earlier with that report. So, this was a, and a first time, I guess, for a while that we're able to get it done early June and then also be able to present it before the June 30 deadline. So, we're, I know Fay's very proud of that. She has worked very hard to accomplish that goal. So, moving on with the presentation. My goal tonight is not to try to read you a 77-page financial statement. I don't know if you were excited and hoping that that was going to happen tonight, but I was not going to do that. And anytime I do a presentation, I try to figure out, if I were sitting in your shoes, what would be important to me? What would I want to know? And so, I'm thinking, what do I want to tell you? So, I've been through this document, and, you know, the main focus is on the general fund, of course. That's the main operating fund of the government. And so, what I've done is gone through this document to highlight some of those areas that need to be commented on, that I feel like are important, that you need to know. The first and foremost is the opinion. You know, that's what we're hired to do, is to audit the financial statements, and we issue an opinion with that. The opinion is considered unmodified. That is the highest level opinion you can have on a financial statement audit. It simply means that the financial statements are properly presented with generally accepted accounting principles. It means you're following all the accounting guidelines, and you have pretty much presented it within generally accepted accounting standards within reason. And we all know how it is when folks start throwing out "in reason." We also have stated that we've got other reports in there. We've got another report that's referenced. It's the report we refer to on the internal controls. We don't, you know, we don't give an opinion on the internal controls of the county, but we have to, we do review them in connection with material areas of the county, and if there's any weaknesses or any areas, we do issue recommendations there as far as what needs to be done and help the county also prepare any corrective action plans. We had two this year in the areas of elected officials. One was in probate, and the other one was in the magistrate court. We also did some other recommendations that we did not consider significant enough to include in this report because of the work that is being done now in the area of grants and in judicial, and I'll talk about that, where they are working to merge together that system so that instead of having these separate books and having these payroll issues and reimbursement issues, that should be, you know, we hope to see that be merged together as one going forward. So, a lot of work has been spent in that to get that where it's much more streamlined process and an efficient process for the county so there's not these tiny issues with reimbursements. So, basically, this audit's covering all your apartments and funds and elected officials. We also audited the Development Authority, which is a component unit. The Health Department is also included. However, we did not audit the Health Department. That was audited by another auditor as of June 30, 2015. So, comments on the income statement. If you'll recall, last year, you had an increase in your mileage rate, which was very much needed. This year, revenues exceeded expenditures by about $589,000, which that means, when you exceed your expenditures, that means you're helping create those reserves for the county, which is very good. Revenues increased 13% from prior year, even though there was no really increase in property taxes. A lot of that was coming from lease proceeds that were issued and where equipment was purchased, so it's basically a wash. And government accounting, you recognize debt as revenue and then the expense, and so it basically washes out, and we'll talk about it on the other side. Intergovernmental or grants increased about $1.2 million. We know what that was. That was related to the TAC project with the depot that the county has. And also, there was a transfer of $578,000 out of E911 to cover the expenses, operating costs that are reported in the general fund. Overall, revenues were under final budget, $259,000. So, we're saying you still didn't quite hit your goal, but that was pretty much in the area of grants. And a grant works simply, you can get the money, you spend the money. If not, you don't spend the money. So, it's not that you have expenditures out there that haven't been covered. So, overall, I think you did very good handling those revenue budgets this year. Okay? I think you did even better on the expenditure side. Expenditures remained pretty much in line. There was a slight decrease maybe from the prior year of about $56,000, but pretty much right in line with last year. Overall, expenditures were below that final budget of $848,000, and there's primarily a couple of reasons. There was contingencies included in that budget of about $363,000 that was not used. Judicial, in the judicial area, there's about $330,000 of salaries that's not actually, their salaries are budgeted there, but they're actually spent over in the other funds, special revenue funds, because they're paid forward grant funds. And public works was under budget in the area of gravel, about $133,000 as well. So, those were the main areas we saw where there were some significant under budgets in the area of expenditures. And this just kind of gives you the history of revenues to expenditures over the past five years. You'll see back in 2011, the red line is the expense and the blue line is revenues, and we always like to keep the blue line either equal to or above the red line. And so, as you can certainly see, we're certainly got a good trend going, starting in about 2013 and, of course, 2014. Last year, there was a surplus and another surplus in the year 2015, the fiscal year we're reporting. Very good. Talking about reserves, the reserves, always something that we're focused on in local governments. One goal I keep hoping to see for Pickens County is the property tax that you levy in the fall that's right now, that'll come in in late fall and probably, I'm trying to remember the due date, early December. I'd like to see your reserves get to a point where that tax is actually levied for the next fiscal year. So, that continues to take some work. You've worked very hard to get those reserves up. Your reserves right now are right at 28%. So, in the year that you decide you want to approach setting that money aside, we're going to have to do some looking at adjusting those revenues out of fund balance, and you're not quite ready for that yet to be able to do that. To basically say, the property taxes that we're collecting, we're not spending on that fiscal year's expenditures. It's being levied, so if we go into our new year, we've got our main revenue source already there, already set aside, and we're not having to wait till almost the end of the year for our largest source of revenue to come in. Okay? Question?
How long have you seen it taken us to get to that point?
I haven't done the calculation yet. I could probably do, Fay, a quick calculation and get it back to her. You're going to, I mean, it's, we're talking probably, talking about, you know, there's probably about $70 billion that's got to be, able to be set aside and make that happen without really taking your fund balance down to nearly nothing. So, and right now, fund balance is about, I want to say it's about two, let me see, about $6.3 million.
Now, that being said, under fund balance being $6.3 million, this year we're having to go by the new GASB regulations on fund balance. About retirement plan has to be focused toward your, coming under your fund balance or being capitalized or not capitalized.
We'll be talking about, yes, we'll be talking about your, the fact that you had to record a liability this year for that.
Thank you. But I guess the point I'm getting at, we know what it is about the GASB rule. What would it have been, what would the fund balance pickings have been if this rule hadn't went into place this year? See where I'm going?
Yes. If you hadn't been required. Well, let me explain that liability for one thing, and I've got a couple of slides at the end, and so we'll just make more.
If you can do that, because I know the public would like to understand that.
Okay. So, one thing that's happened in local government, not just in Georgia, but all over the country, is pensions years ago had to be measured, and it made local governments take a strong look at, you know, what they're offering, can we afford it? So, last year, your liability and your pension plan was right at, you know, $3 million, close to $3 million, not quite, $3 million. Well, GASB, which is the governmental accounting standards, Bullworth comes along and says, guess what? That's always been a disclosure, a need-to-know, nice-to-know number. You've always had it in your financial statements and disclosures. You don't have to put it on the balance sheet now. And so, when it goes on the balance sheet, it's not going at the fund level balance sheet like your, the budget that you're operating with, because government doesn't have long-term receivables and debt on their balance sheet. It goes on like what we refer to as the entity-wide level, where all the assets are recorded, your bonds payable. It's going on as an additional line with that liability this year. So, in this year, you didn't get hurt too bad by it. It went on, it was a little bit less, I think it's about $2.6 million that got recorded. Let me see, in the financials off the top of my head.
It's $2.7, wasn't it?
Two, I believe so.
$2.7.
So, if this, so by last year's standards, if this hadn't been calculated this year, we'd have had, to the six million, we'd have had $8.2 million.
Well, it doesn't go on at this level, remember, this level that we're talking about. At, at your entity-wide level, and if you've got your financial statements, you will refer to it as page one, that is where all the assets, that's full base accrual. It's not the level that you operate on, is why we don't focus on it. So, but it's page one in your financial statements. The positive thing here, though, is it caused your fund balance or net assets to be negative. This is the first column. That's where you're going to see it. If you look down that first column under liabilities, you'll see net pension liability. And it went on as $2.6 million. Now, many governments, when they had put this liability out this year, and we've done several of them this year, that has caused their, to have negative assets, basically, negative net assets, because we've got more liabilities than we have assets, unfortunately. That was not the case here. You had unrestricted net assets of $1.9 million still left over after this entry was recorded. I know that's very confusing. We try not to get the two levels confused, because the entity-wide, it is important, but you don't operate there, but it's where all the long-term transactions are being reported, such as this one, and also in capital assets, bonds payable, et cetera. So, the positive about pensions, though, is state of Georgia's already been making governments fund them. What they haven't been doing is making you fund your OPEL, which is your other post, your other health insurance for retirees. So, and again, your balance is already, you're on the balance sheet at $1.7 million, and the key there is, you know, how much are you paying for retiree healthcare now, and when is it going to be, when is it going to continue to grow? Because that, as people retire, that's what causes that cost to continue to go up, and that's where I've encouraged governments, talk to your actuary, ask them about trends, just make sure that you're going to be okay and that you're not going to get to a point a few years where your property taxes are going to be levied almost to pay employee healthcare and retirement benefits. So, there's many governments in Georgia that will have that concern if they don't start changing and looking at the benefits. This is all done solely to make elected officials think and measure, if you're going to offer a benefit, who's going to pay for it in the future? That's what this is about. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a comment, that the commissioners did vote last year to limit that, limit the number of employees that are involved in that, though.
Right.
So, that liability really should go away.
And it's, and your liability is very, very small compared to a lot of governments. I mean, it's $1.7. There's governments that we've finished audits on that have $30 million in OPEL liability that may be growing to the tune of $7 to $8 million every year. And I'm not naming names, but these are North Georgia counties. So, so there's, you know, there's some nice plans out there that have been great, but, you know, the reality sometimes is, the government may not be able to sustain them. It's better to know that now, when you have a chance, just like you did, to do something about it before it's too late. Does that, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. I was trying to be sure they understood. I've no doubt it's worked. I just wanted to be sure.
Right.
We get questions as, in the last two months, you know, of issues that. I was trying to make the thing as plain as we could. I know it's a confusing process.
Yes. Well, to get back to this slide, this slide is really almost more of a, more of a cash picture than it is a long-term asset or a long-term liability. So, but this will be effective if we decide, you know, when we do get more reserves built up. What would it look like if we made an adjustment to go ahead and set money aside for your property taxes so they'll be available and recognized for your next fiscal year? And that may be something that you may want to start calculating this coming year, see, okay, how much more is it going to take to get there, and how much longer are we going to need before to that point? You still have a ways to go, though. Sploshed, just comments on your splosh fund. Collected about $4 million this year in revenues and spent about $3.4 billion during 2015, and this was for various county projects. Long-term debt, and when I'm talking about long-term debt, you know, we just talked about pensions, which is long-term, but we're talking about debt here where you're probably paying the bank or somebody every month or every quarter at least. So, long-term debt is about $10 million, and that's made up primarily of a note payable. That note payable balance at year-end is $1.2 million, and that's for the community center. That note is going to mature fiscal year 2019. The State Patrol Headquarters paid off this year, so that's one less, one less debt that you have to worry about. I believe that you paid about $392,000. I don't remember the interest portion of that, but that did get paid off during 2015. Capital leases, $893,000 in capital leases, which are maturing in fiscal year 2019. Now, one thing to note and one thing for you to be proud of, though, your debt's pretty low. We like to look at the Department of Community Affairs and their planning guides to see what they consider to be comparable to other counties in your area, and we've used the 2014 planning guide, because it hadn't changed from last year, but $9.6 million is the average general obligation debt for counties of a similar size to your county. And those are simply based on population. It doesn't matter what you've got going on, it's based on population. And that's from populations from 25,000 to 25,000 to nearly 50,000, and those counties include Chautauqua, Haversham, Gilbert, Lumpkin, Murray, and White Counties are some of the ones that are pretty close by here. So, I think that's something special to note, and I'm not telling you that to go out and borrow more money, but, you know, there, you have a lot of flexibility. That demonstrates the strength that you have in your, in the cash balances that you're built, that you're building as well, and paints a very strong financial picture, which I know is very important for this county. Okay? Business-type activities, you've got two of them. One's water fund, the other's airport. The water fund had an operating income of $47,000. I know that doesn't sound like much, but it's, I'm glad to see an income. Many times, they usually have losses, and on the positive side, that does include depreciation costs, which is a non-cash cost of $606,000. That doesn't include your debt service payments. You made about $650,000 in debt service this year. That's probably on the high end, because you did do some refunding of debt, so hopefully that'll come down. Basically, with this picture you have this year, you're just about, I think you might have a small loss of $3,000 in cash, but a lot of that was because of the refunding, et cetera, that you're doing. That you did get a better interest rate, and you paid off all of the GFA notes that you had outstanding. So, speaking of long-term debt, you did refund a lot, the bonds you had and also the GFA debt into one, which made a bonds payable of about $7.7 billion. The interest rate on that is 2.35%, and it matures in 2029.
And these are classified as all enterprise funds anyway?
That's all, yes, that's all debt. That's in the general funds, not paid for this.
Right.
So, that is all enterprise fund, and that debt primarily paid off GFA debt. It paid off some other bonds that you had to take advantage of a better interest rate. Okay? And I do want to commend you, Fay, on recording that entry. I did not have to make any changes to it. It never fails when there's a big binary funding, no one ever gets it right. You did a great job. So, the airport is the other fund, the business-type fund that the county has. It had an operating loss of $63,000. This includes depreciation cost of $83,000, but it doesn't include the debt service payments of $101,000. And that's just interest, that's not any principal included. So, airport authorities, you know, them themselves are not moneymakers, but you're probably going to have to have them for economic purposes, so it's very important to watch them and just to be on the table. If you've got to subsidize them, subsidize them with a transfer. Don't let them be internal funds borrowing and paying back eventually, or they're never in a position to pay back, and it ends up just misleading on your financial statements. There's debt there of about $4 million of a bond payable, and that paid for the airport taxiway construction, and its interest rate is 3.25%, and it matures 2029. Other issues, we just talked about the GASB 68 implementation and the fact that it was new this year, that is your pension liability, and the fact that for the first time, you reported a debt pension liability on the books for $2.7 million. And again, we're talking about, you know, a fairly low number and a fairly healthy plan as well. So, there's not really a lot that I think that's really, you know, devastates your financial statements by having to record that liability this year. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, y'all know where I'm at. Everybody knows how to call me if you have anything. I do appreciate the opportunity to work with Pickens County. We do enjoy the relationship.
Thank you. All right. That brings us down to item number seven on the consent agenda. We signed a resolution commending Georgia Family Connection for 25 years of service and commit to the citizens of our state in sincere gratitude to Pickens County Family Connection, which was founded in 1999 for its dedicated work connecting partners and improving lives of children and families in our community. All right. Item number eight is the, we have any, we do not have any old business. Is that correct, Deborah?
I don't know.
No, no business. All right. That brings us down to item number nine, under new business. The AmeriCorps position was the Pickens County Extension Office. Would you like to comment on that? Because I haven't got them up to speed on that one. I don't know if they're very familiar with that one.
Sure.
This is Mrs. Rachel Wiggington.
All right. Well, the AmeriCorps organization is wanting to offer the Pickens County Extension Office a part-time assistant for the office, which would be for me with a 4-H program. It's a one-year service that they would do, so they would start It's a one-year service that they would do, so they would start September 2016, and they would end in August 2017. The AmeriCorps organization and State 4-H would fund the majority of it, but they're asking the county to put up $1,200 for the year. When we hire someone, whether or not they decide to do healthcare or not would depend on the $1,200. So if they decide not to get healthcare, the county would only need to put forward $300, but if they do want healthcare, we would be having to put forward the $1,200. And so I'd like to ask the county bring in $300 for $1,200.
Ms. Fay, you have a, can we squeeze a little bit to get them $1,200 to the other two commissioners?
It seems that way. Their budget, they have a $61,000, excuse me, $61,000 budget for the year, and they've only spent 18.5, they're 30%. So I feel like there's, they can use some lines around, and it won't be a budget then.
Ms. Danny, Mr. Martin, what's your? All right, I need to move in a second to approve that.
Sure.
Having to move in a second to approve the request for 4-H. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Number opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Just keep Fay posted on how you want to do, she'll get the $1,200 or $300, however you want to handle that one. All right, bring this down to item B under a D for road education of Vineyard Way off Highway 136. Mr. Lanham?
I haven't proposed the, y'all, if you'd like, and certainly if you want, but this is where the 136 between the overloads where the line is. It's my understanding, and Rodney can correct me, and Richard, I believe the landowners have gone through our requirements to have the road approved by the county, and this is a D from the, from the landowner to the county for that road now on the Vineyard Trail on the plan.
The road was, so we received the letter in 2014, I believe, didn't we, Richard? On that one, and y'all come across it and found it and...
That's correct. And previously, when the road was first laid out, and as it's written in documents years ago, it was Vineyard Trail. Now, for 911 and mailing address purposes, it's known as Vineyard Way. Paint and Goat Vineyards has an address known as Vineyard Way. The other lots are currently vacant and what may be future houses back behind the vineyard. So, you know, it may or may not mean a lot, but you know, for, at least for mailing purposes in 911, it'll be Vineyard Way.
Yeah, that won't matter. I'll just have to, that's a challenge, sorry about that.
Do I need, number one, do I need a move in a second to accept the road into the county system?
And then if y'all do that, I'll have the landowner sign and report it and give it to the...
The road didn't meet county requirements, Rodney?
Yes, sir. It had a couple of deficiencies, but those have been corrected.
All right. What's y'all's pleasure with that one?
Is this one that we've been, we've said recently?
It's already, no, it's already paved. It's ready, it meets county standards, it's paved up to the standard, it just be brought into the county road system. We have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed? Now, in regard to that D, do I need to have a move in a second for them to give me the authority to sign off on it whenever they want to? Okay, all right, so we'll do that, okay. All right, that brings us down to number 10 under action items. A, approved minutes. Y'all have got a copy of the regular board meeting we had on May 19, 2016. I need to move in a second to approve those minutes.
Move in a second.
Moving a second, any further discussion on them? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed, thank you. And also, we had a work session on June the 2nd of 2016. Need to move in a second to approve those minutes also. Help me here.
So moved.
And I'll second that one. We have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed, thank you. Then, under item B, number one, we have a rezon request for Bradford R. Geeson, 1.73 acres on Hubbard Road in Marble Hill, Georgia, parcel number 047008-001. Went from neighborhood commercial to, neighborhood commercial to highway business, amendment number 105. Let's see here. The band commission voted six yes and zero no to approve the rezon request. Here it is right here. Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on April 14, 2016 from Bradford R. Geeson requesting a change in land use classification of neighborhood commercial to highway business on 1.73 acres located on Hubbard Road, Marble Hill, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, would be to expand the meeting warehouse facility to this adjoining property of which both are owned by the same company. A public hearing was held on the 13th of June, 2016 regarding this application in the Pickens County Commissioners Meeting Room before the Pickens County Planning Commission. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and the public, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted six yes and zero no to approve the rezon request on 1.73 acre parcel paying on tax map, parcel 047-008-001. The Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the work commissioners for review and decision. So I need a, what's y'all's pleasure, need to move in a second to approve? All right, have a move to approve and have a second. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed, thank you. There you go, Mr. Deborah. All right, we have another one here, item C, a resolution for declaring of an official intent to reimburse cost of acquiring equipment with tax-exempt financing, E99 equipment. Two, oh, this is, okay, two amputations, two bids. Fay, you want to talk to this?
Yes, at the work session, you all had, I've got a copy of the two bids that we have for the financing of two ambulances and the upgrade of the 911 center, which totals $571,000. BBNT came in with the lowest interest rate at 1.93% for years, and the other rate I think was 2.44, I believe, from PNC Equipment Finance. So this, this is just to authorize the chairman to sign the lease. I think the ambulances are due to be delivered maybe next week.
Hopefully.
But also this resolution for declaration of official intent to reimburse cost. When I was talking to the general at BBNT, we have, we've already taken possession and paid for the equipment at 911. I think it was around $70,000. And since it's going to be a little bit more than 60 days before we can get the lease in place and can reimburse the general fund, this is an IRS issue. We just have to have that declaration signed that sends you there, just so that we can reimburse the lease proceeds.
All right.
I have to sign it.
Yeah, Deborah's got to sign this, but I need to move, I need to move in a second to approve this for Deborah's sake. I'll move in a second, any further discussion? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed? There you go, Deborah. And the 911 upgrade is still on, it's still online, so it should be finishing up here middle of August, one month, stepped down. All right. Okay, item D, the statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement. I think that's the one we normally sign with EMA for statewide. It's one we've done for many years back when Bob Hyrum was there under EMA directorship. So I can read through it, or I can get y'all, get y'all a copy, but it is a statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement if another issue is written, you know what those are. So I need to move in a second to give me the authority to go ahead and sign this.
Sure.
I'm moving a second for discussion. None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed, thank you. All right. Now that brings us down to item E, the fee schedule revision for permits and other items raised to Planning and Development Department. We had a discussion at the last work session in regard to that, and we've had some, some of these revisions, we've had some, we lowered them and we raised some. I can read the first page if y'all, to jog y'all's memory. Pickens County staff has submitted a request to revise the fee schedule for permits and other items raised to Planning and Development Department. The fee section of Chapter 16 Billings and Billing Regulation states that the schedule shall be set forth by the governing body. Fee schedule had not, had not been reviewed since 2013. Staff determines whether the fees in Pickens were higher or lower than other North Georgia counties. Goal is to have a fee schedule similar to other comparable counties. It does not, that does not result in an unfair burden to property owners and folks who conduct business in Pickens. Cherokee County was not used since the fees are significantly higher and are based on the valuation method different from other North Georgia counties. Most fees are similar to other counties. However, a few changes made may be appropriate based on research from Bartow, Dawson, Forsyth, Gilmer, Gordon, and Walker Counties. Staff has prepared and revised fee schedule with a few changes. Since Planning Commission recommended approval on April 11, it has been brought to the attention of staff that commercial plan review fees for large buildings may be too high. Example, a plan review fee for a 10,000 square foot building would be $1,500. And I think you're, I think we were lowering that revised to, it was a $100 flat fee for buildings up to 4,999 feet, and then $200 for flat fee for buildings 5,000 feet or greater. I think I say we got this revised here. Other than that, the recommendations are all been the same on that particular, so I need a move in a second to accept the fee schedule. Have a move in a second to accept the fee schedule, any further discussion? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed, thank you. Now that brings us down to one here, we've got item F on unsupervised youth policy. Brian, I'm, you too, I don't think you're familiar with some of this. If you can do it quickly, if you get us a quick deal, what's going on?
At the last work session, I presented to you a unsupervised youth policy for our park. Currently, we're experiencing some issues, not only with the middle schoolers walking over after school, we've experienced issues this summer as well. Parents are dropping off their children. And I say children, I view children pretty much anyone under the age of 16. They're dropping off their children there some age of 12, and drop them off at 8:00 a.m. and not come pick up till 9:00 p.m. They may leave them money for snacks, they may not. We may be able to feed them through our summer camp program if we have the food available. But it's become more and more prevalent. Once school gets in session, that the parks and rec department is being tasked with baby care for, babysitting for all of these youths coming from the middle school. So what I presented to the board is to have a blanket policy that you must be at least 16 years of age to be unsupervised at the park. Now, this is not, and there's some, you know, misinformation going around right now that we don't want kids there, and that's not the case. As long as you have parental supervision, we want you to come to the parks, come to the gym, come to the ballfields. But no longer will your parents be allowed to drop you off if you do not meet the minimum age of 16. Now, if you are that age of 16, as long as you have an adult 18 years or older, then they can be their weenie, they can be your chaperone. But we tried to throw stuff at it the three years I've been here. We came up with a form for the middle schoolers to sign, the parents signed up on it as well, basically just stating that, you know, when they're not in the building, they're unsupervised. I was hoping that was going to be the cure-all, that's not the case. It's just spiraled out of control, and it's got to the point where we need something stronger that way when, you know, mama drops little Johnny off and he's 12 years old, I can say, no, you can't be here unless you stay with him. That would help me out and the department out tremendously.
And another issue, correct me if I'm wrong, another issue we're having is as they were coming across a middle school during school year, we were having 11-year-olds, 12-14-year-olds. In theory, we're telling somebody they were going to the rec center after school, and we were happening to find a few couples, underage couples in the dugouts, some of them coming out of the barn, neighbor's barn, those type of issues were going on. So we were trying to come up with a solution to, to control this before it gets out of control.
The liability is huge on the county's part, it's absolutely astronomical, because the fact when they're walking from the middle school, just that short distance, absolutely anything can go on. Now, once they're in the community center, I've got cameras, I've got staff there, I've got eyes on them, but they're coming in, they're signing their name, they're telling their parents they're there, but then they're going to the ballfields, they're going wherever they want to, and then when the parent finds out, they're surprised. So it's gotten, it's gotten out of hand. Not many other jurisdictions have this type of issue because they're not right beside the school. So like, you know, Gordon County, not Gordon County, but a good example, Murray County, they're off in the middle of nowhere where the community center is at. So it's just the, it's got to the point that my hands are getting kind of tied. Now, we've got some really good kids, who all they want to do is come to the gym and play basketball, and I hate it. I absolutely hate it for those kids, but the majority of it, the majority of the kids are running it for the really good ones, so.
Are all those guys from the middle school?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's correct.
In fact, when they get rid of the board education...
I've been working with the middle school, they're all for this, because it's just as much of a headache on them, because the policy we have now is they sign the form, and then they can have permission to walk over. Well, they're calling me all the time during school, you know, does little Sarah have permission to walk over? No, she doesn't. Well, she has to come sign the form, then go back. So I think now that we have this rule in place, it's going to help the middle school out as well. Now, all of this right here that's going to be happening doesn't mean that there's nothing for youth to do in Pickens County. The Boys and Girls Club has just opened up, and they are specializing in a teen aspect of their center. So there is a place for these people or these kids to go after school. So lots that I've been hearing was, well, there's nothing for the youth to do now. With the Boys and Girls Club that's now opened up, they can take the older kids, so there is programs, and they're set up for that. They're set up for after-school programs. The rec department, we're set up for athletics, you know, baseball, basketball, soccer, things of that nature, but we're just not set up for a year-long after-school program.
I mean, I agree with this.
Do you have any policy? All right, I have a move in a second. Hold on a second. Okay, so what you got, Pickens County明确规定 for facility rules, no food allowed, only water, squirted, period, in the gym area, no cleats, shoes, pants, shirts, must be worn all times, no abusive language, no fighting, no call, no youth, oh, there it is, no youth younger than 16 allowed without being accompanied by an adult 18 years of age and older. That's the only change we want to make to that.
That's correct, sir. We'll get those right now. We had the rules set in place, and we'll be taking those down if the board rules tonight in favor of this new policy change. And my goal is to get this rolled out as of August 1st, so that way we're right and locked up with school starting, that way there's nobody saying we didn't know, so.
All right. So I need a move in a second, what's y'all's, what's y'all's pleasure?
We'll accept them.
Yeah.
Move.
All right, have a move?
Second.
Have a move in a second to accept the change. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Opposed, thank you. We'll go ahead and accept that change.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to item number 11 on guests and comments. Somebody need to have a comment? All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's about 20 after 6:00, there's a meeting going on downstairs that everyone here is invited to. It's a downtown alliance for the, for the city of Jasper. Please, if y'all want to stay, please go downstairs and down there, and I think the engineering company is supposed to be there, so you are invited to at 10:00. But thank y'all, and you have a good weekend, and stay cool in this hot weather. This meeting is now adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on one second. My fault, pardon. We have, we've had a request to go into executive session, so we have got to discuss a, also the meeting is not adjourned, I'm going to take that back, the meeting is not adjourned, luckily y'all didn't vote on it. But the meeting is not adjourned, but we have got... But the meeting is not adjourned, but we have got to go to executive session, number one, to discuss and deliberate upon the employment and employment compensation, hiring, disconnection or dismissal of career, act of evaluation, or rating of a public officer, employee, or interview candidates for executive positions, and number two, to consult and meet with legal counsel contained depending on potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, and other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the county or an officer or employee in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. You may stay and wait till we get out of executive session, but, oh, I'm sorry, that was motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a move in a second. Any further discussion?
None.
None being, all in favor of that number saying aye? Thank you.